We're gonna get started at seven o'clock. Thank you. Welcome to the Fruit Heights City Council meeting. We are starting with an anchor location at nine ten South Mountain Road, Fruit Heights, Utah, eight four zero three seven. My name is John Pullman, Mayor of the City of Fruit Heights, and we're gonna begin this meeting with a pledge allegiance. It's gonna be led by Eileen Moss and a prayer or thought by Florence Sadler.
Please rise.
Please rise.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation in our own, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Our Father and Son, we are grateful to be gathered here in this fine city. We are thankful for the moisture recovery we seek. We are thankful for our city leadership and pray that that will guide us to be good leaders. We're thankful for the youth city council joining us and pray that that will help them as they learn and grow in their activities this year. We say this in the name of Jesus Christ. Amen.
Amen. Item number one point three is roll calls, Haley.
Councilmember Gary Anderson.
Here.
Councilmember Mark Cutrell.
Here.
Councilmember Eileen Moss.
Here.
Councilmember Florence Sadler.
Here.
Councilmember Sean Stevenson.
Excused.
Mayor John Pullman.
Here.
Great, thank you. Item number one point four on our agenda is the training. Every one of our agendas, we set aside three minutes for the one of the elected officials to train us on our responsibilities. As an elected official tonight is Gary Anderson. You've got three minutes. Go ahead.
Thanks. So today, while I was reviewing the meeting minutes from the last two meetings, I found something in the meeting minutes that was actually said, but not really the intent of the comment. And so I was kind of just wondering to myself how that might be best handled. And so I reviewed the Utah League of City and Towns handbook here. And this is what I found is I found that it's more important to go after the intent here. But I'm just gonna read it just a little bit from it. Says minutes are important for two reasons. They are the historical record of the city or town, and they also serve to inform the residents of what their local government is doing. If they are to serve these two functions, they must be accurate, complete, kept forever, and available to the public as soon as possible following the meeting. Minutes should not be used to hide mistakes or for political propaganda. Keeping accurate minutes, which are freely available to anyone to read, is not only required by law, but should be the goal of all city officials. The following is a short answer to frequently asked questions regarding minutes. Are minutes required for all public meetings? Yes, all, for all public meetings. What must be in the minutes? Public meeting minutes must contain the following: The date, time, place of the meeting. The names of council members present and absent. The substance of the matters discussed, including a record of how each council member voted on any item. The names of any persons who speak at the meeting. And the substance, in brief, of the comments made. And any other information that any council member requests to be put in the minutes. And then it goes on. But basically, this is the reason that we have them given to us in a rough draft, and then we review them for clarity. And not only clarity of what was said, but what it was intended to be said. There you go.
Awesome. Thanks so much, Gary. Perfect. Thank you. Item number two is the Declaration of Conflict of Interest. Do we have anything to discuss tonight? Senior hearing, we move on to item number three. On all our agendas, we set aside a public comment period. We allow anyone who would like to present anything to the city council to stand up and say your name. We ask you to keep your comments in three minutes. Do we have anyone that would like to say anything tonight? Not senior hearing, we're gonna move on to item number four point two. We're going to switch the Davis County Sheriff's report and the YCC swearing in. Thank you so much for being here, the youth city council. What a wonderful group. This is such an awesome opportunity to swear in a new group of youth city council members. What we will do is if all the youth can come forward, we will do the swearing in at that point. We're gonna be swearing in a little picture, alright? Okay, so if you can all raise your hand, right hand to swear. You say a "aye" and say your name.
Aye, 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 aye.
Pledge to uphold and defend.
Pledge to uphold and defend.
The Constitution of the United States of America.
The Constitution of the United States of America.
Along with the laws of the state of Utah.
Along with the laws of the state of Utah.
And the policies of Fruit Heights City.
And the policies of Fruit Heights City.
As a member of the youth city council.
As a member of the youth city council.
I commit to carry out my duties.
I commit to carry out my duties.
With integrity and impartiality.
With integrity and impartiality.
To the best of my ability.
To the best of my abilities.
Congratulations. If you can kind of, the milk can slide over. And you don't have to slide in, it'll take a picture. Now, I know there's a lot going on this evening. You are welcome to stay, but if you have other things going on, you are pleased to step out. Yes, go ahead.
We're done. Oh, we're almost finished.
Actually, before you leave, you have a quick statement.
Yeah, so we're mostly done with the paperwork. We have a lot of things to handle to talk to people. Do you fill that out and leave it here with, um, the A B K R?
Thank you, Jeanne John Grover, for our need and advisory to the city council. Thank you so much. Now, we were gonna have the sheriff report, so if you want some hot news, you can stay for a few minutes and listen to the sheriff. Thank you, sheriff, for coming here this evening. What a wonderful presence.
Thank you, Sheriff. This is the first time I've seen a sheriff on the day of his day's sheriff's office.
And I'm Lieutenant Boucher, patrol lieutenant for the sheriff's office.
And this evening, we're gonna be presenting to you the first quarter of twenty twenty five and the statistics of Davis County Sheriff's Office of Law and Protection. So first, go over current statistics for patrol. Now, this is gonna be, to start out of patrol hours, we've had an average of thirteen point four hours of deputy presence in Fruit Heights. And that's per day on a seven day week. And so here, and this will be the aim for the rest of the presentation, where he represents the three-year average from twenty twenty two through twenty twenty four. Twenty four is green, and orange is twenty twenty five. Now, you might notice that seventy hours in Y C, in this case, it doesn't apply at all for going forward. Made by the little ones, because of the time of the day. So these are life stats, so these are updated as of today. Dispatch incidents were actually low for twenty twenty four average, or low average. As far as field initiative incidents, or considers these sort of events where the deputy is initiating the interaction in the supercabs as opposed to it being called in for dispatch, they are above average. Our office is doing a lot more. Situations, we are above the three-year average by quite a bit and maintaining above average with twenty twenty four. Of those citations for speeding specifically, we are above the three-year average.
I have a question. Is it? Now, it looks like we're lower on this site, on this speeding. Is it because people are catching on, do you think, or that we're serious about, or what do you think?
Good question. Well, I can answer that without, you know, the, just talk to the people and stuff. But I, you know, over the last year, we made a little bit of change in the expectations for deputies. One of those increased. Targeted for, uh, trafficking enforcement responsibilities during the shift. And hopefully over the year, the routine or the the frequency that happening has been recognized by the public and the response to it has caused. That's our goals. Right? I can't say for sure now, but it is.
And certainly with the statistics on South Mountain Road, which are illustrated in your presentation, for those that speed, like the high of speeding is gone way down. And so.
We don't have any fifty mile per hour, people?
Um, don't worry, but we're not, we're not quite as high as we were the last. I was looking at the numbers last time, I'm sure you guys knew it was like almost seventy years ago. He's like, yeah, I know, but no, we're not, not quite up there. We're trying to relax ourselves a little bit.
I think the other thing that helps too, we've kind of made a change about a year and a half, like we were to where they're more visible on the screens, you know, that you work and then you trip apart. More people see them while they're busy.
Perfect.
For surprise, I have a report of the server out of the low average. Property crimes, some of these are a little crazy. So as you can see, there were no property crimes from August, in August or September that reported flash shots. That's what that space type act needs. And for twenty twenty five, we are at a low average for property crimes as well. Right, just aside, again, this one looks a little crazy because we didn't have some throughout twenty twenty four. We pre-pared around twenty twenty five, so we're again at a low average. Moving on to the simply four different reports. So these were, uh, these statistics are representative of January first, twenty twenty five through March third, first, twenty twenty five. So here we had a total of three hundred and three citations. Of those, two were criminal arrests. Six were cited and releases. And zero for the basic tickets. Hundred and seventy moving violations. Moving violations are citations that are surrounded legal aid motions such as an impound and stop, a stop sign, or speeding, use of the vector. Non-legal violation, maybe twenty. Uh, non-legal violation are things like in, in after insurance or expired issue. Recordings, eighty. Property violations, fourteen. I think a total of fourteen. This, um, now, a hundred and, pardon me. Hundred and seventy-seven of those citations were, um, had one day offenses on that citation, speedy. Hundred and seventy-seven of them. Of those, two hundred and four of those were citations and thirty-seven were in ways. And here is where we see citations on Mountain Road. The average speed is forty. There were shop people out. The middle speed is thirty, and the maximum speed looks like a slightly harder about, I believe, is fifty. Um, during, of the citations, of the three hundred and three citations that are issued during the first quarter, a hundred and sixty were issued on South Mountain Road. So during that period of time, we had nine hundred and ninety-seven incidents in Fruit Heights. That includes both dispatch initiated and field initiative. Of those, um, less than two percent were criminal nature. Wonderful. Um, so of those, we had one death investigation, eight property crimes, six prison crimes, and two crimes. Moving on to investigations, compare the statistics. Property crimes, we are about at average. Property crimes, below average.
Non-existent.
What was that?
Non-existent.
Non-existent, yeah, we have, uh, one January, is it? Uh, special victims, very happy to report, below average. We had one in January, one in March. And crime crimes, uh, below average. Wonderful, very happy, so. Now, moving on to allegations, quarterly statistics, January first to January, uh, July. Uh, in total, we have forty-two hours purchased out, uh, which is, which is good, right? Like we saw, we have less cases that are being investigated or less words, that's wonderful. Of the cases that were investigated, uh, looks like child abuse and something solved were of more problems.
For all of two cases each?
All of, all of two cases each. Well, of course, for the less than past days, we're disorders. Be fair to say. Um, and we have other cases during that period. Victim services are very happy, um, to be able to have that opportunity to have victim services here at the Davis County Sheriff's Office. Now, if you look at that day range, it says February to March. The reason behind that is is that our victim services started changing the way that they document hours and document their, their services. Um, before, hours were tracked at the end of case closure. Now they're tracked actively. Um, so this is, uh, below what is accurate. Um, the support police rules to the data, or January, that's when they, they changed how they track that data. So going forward to the next quarter, we'll be able to provide the full statistics for this quarter.
Let's make example of this. What would, what would something classify, be classified within the special victims?
So, uh, so this is victim services. Um, special victims are generally victims of sex crimes.
Okay.
So, so of, um, sorry. Uh, so, um, we had ten victims during this time and, uh, excuse me, we had ten whole victims during this time. Uh, three victims and six non-legal victims, maybe over just us that, for just two hours. Um, our most prevalent, um, types of victimizations are special victims. That looks to me, um, seems like a regular clerical error. Pardon me, yeah, it's clerical error. Uh, special victims is, is the most problems type of victims that they have been working with. And below the bottomless types of services provided. So our, uh, our victim documents provide, definitely, the insurance and safety support system services, such as crisis plan, everything's about nature. Uh, court advocacy services, where they'll actually attend to court with the victim and walk them through parts of the legal process. Wonderful. Because we got, uh, the legal process can be very challenging. Uh, and then the educational and, uh, legal services. So we're going into therapy or, or face restitution. That's all I have to say this week.
Thank you, Elizabeth.
Thank you.
Good luck.
Thank you, pal.
Thank you.
You're doing great. It's great seeing you guys in the streets. Thank you.
We did have one comment from a resident. I did, recently, on the, um, the speeding up on the road that connects to Farmington up on, up High.
Uh, how, eighteen hundred?
No.
Eighteen, eighteen hundred?
Yeah, eighteen hundred East. So just a, a resident that's in the area is concerned about.
Speeding?
Speeding up there, and I don't.
Uh, Terrace Drive, all the way across.
Yeah, just, you know.
Not that anybody could hear the motors, like, revving or anything like that.
Well, and then the, the other concern is the continued, um, kids on golf carts and the e-bikes and no helmets and no, you know, it's scary, scary to see some of them.
It is, and we, we keep reading that over the day. I used to really wear that watching for it, just unfortunately with the quiet and some of those electric bikes and those golf carts, it's hard to know when they're out or about. And they, they do a good job of paying attention to what these are. We're doing a better job of being visible, which in some situations does have an impact.
We'll take the responsibility, we're, we're the selfless, we'll take it. Keep it honest.
Yes, I agree.
Is there anything we can do to help you with that?
I agree, it would be great. And that's more, uh, I, I guess. If we could get better for our patients, we will stay on.
So that's part of the problem.
So I have that educated community.
Um, on what's legal and what's not.
Exactly.
Thank you.
Better.
Appreciate you being here.
Thank you, thank you.
Uh, we're gonna move on to, uh, discussion items number five, five point one. Um, so we have to put together an amendment for the solid waste collection agreement. Uh, appreciate you guys for doing that. Um, as you know, Darren is, is out of town tonight. Um, there were some amendments, highlights that need to be discussed. Play it from a two-year or three-year agreement, any protection date on that, whatever it is. Uh, did any of you have a question? It's something that's already been discussed and approved, it's just we need to redo it because it wasn't done.
Yeah, I heard a couple titles when they, they worked on and different things, so.
Anything about that?
Corrected.
So it's all corrected?
Probably corrected. Uh, I don't know if this one's corrected, but I know that, I was talking to Darren yesterday, he said it would be.
Would be two teams.
Excellent. Thank you.
I can say that they're going to be wrong.
Right, but the one in our, in our box.
Is that?
Yes.
So what day is that gonna start?
This is just a continuation of the agreement we currently have.
Right.
It's gonna, it's gonna begin, um, July first.
July first, cause yeah, two thirty, that's what I was asking.
Right.
Okay.
Excellent. There's no further questions. Uh, Haley, did you wanna present anything on that? You can come forward and present if you'd like.
You did a good job.
Excellent. Um, item number six point one is approved denied in this, the solid waste collection agreement. Um, I would entertain a motion at this point in time.
Motion to approve the amendment to the solid waste collection agreement.
Excellent, motion to approve on the second, second point, May. Any further discussion on this agreement? All favor of approving the amendment to the solid waste collection agreement, all favor say aye.
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 Any opposed? That motion carries. Six point two is approved, April twenty second, twenty twenty five city council minutes. Um, do I have a motion to approve those minutes?
Motion to approve the minutes of April twenty second, twenty twenty five. As, uh, with, with any corrections that have been given to Haley.
Excellent, thank you, Gary. Do I have a second?
Last one, yes.
Second, Flo? Any further discussion? All favor approving the minutes from April twenty twenty two, uh, twenty twenty five, sorry. April twenty second, twenty twenty five, as corrected, all favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? It's approved. Uh, May sixth. Do I have a motion to approve the minutes from May sixth?
I'm moved that we approved the city council's main minutes for May sixth, twenty twenty five.
Excellent, I have a second.
Okay.
Thanks, Mark. Any further discussion? All favor approving the May sixth, twenty twenty five city council minutes, all favor say aye.
There were a discussion for, there were a couple of corrections.
Yes.
Well, did, did you need to mention in your motion?
Uh, how about we just do it this way? All favor approving the May sixth, twenty twenty five city council minutes as been modified, all favor say aye.
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 Any opposed? Excellent. Uh, we have no table items, calendar items, uh, city council on May twentieth. Uh, we're going into post-school, uh, tidings. So if anyone cannot make that, just please let me know beforehand, so we can have a.
This is May twentieth.
Yes, incorrect. It is, um, June. Uh, so, sorry, that was, that was my fault.
June third?
June third. Um, we will, we'll discuss that. If there isn't stuff on the agenda throughout the summer, um, we will try to consolidate all of our meetings. Usually, the summer's slowed down quite a bit, with not very much of our development agreements being discussed. Um, when that is all put together, um, we will definitely have a meeting to discuss that. But if there isn't anything on the agenda, then I don't have a, I don't see a reason to meet just in there.
Is that development agreement, the one?
The development agreement that's being discussed is the, uh, park and property.
Okay.
So it would be June third, twenty twenty five. Um, Memorial Day, the office will be closed, May twenty sixth, and finally, May twenty seventh. Um, city council report, my number ten. Actually, it's, I mean.
Uh, so the territory committee was unable to meet because, um, they're unavailable and, um.
Okay, Gary?
Uh, nothing.
Flo?
Um, just the city council, they interviewed, um, part of those, you, um, Saturday, and right afterward had a really fun party. Josh Cox is our current mayor of this council. So he helped interview and helped run the party. And there were maybe only twenty-five children there, but they had a blast. It was really fun.
Congratulations, Josh, for being the mayor of twenty twenty five, twenty twenty six. We are truly looking forward to the top of our campaign. Thank you. And I agree, there were eleven new inductees and twenty-five in total.
At least, oh, yeah.
That's awesome.
And then this week, they all have, um, well, you call it a retreat, right? And it's downstairs, and it's just recording them and have lunch and, and things like that, and order good shirts. Do you want to say anything else about?
Um, yeah, just planning, probably a year, all right, and so we're gonna get to the way to.
That's Saturday at, what time is it?
Friday.
Friday at, uh, eleven.
Little eleven?
I think it's.
Eleven is off to you. So if you wanna come eat lunch, it, it is about noon.
I need a.
Maybe a half past. Are you?
I need a red, I, it's just.
I think, so don't you think they'd be welcome to tell?
Sure.
This, this Friday at what time?
Eleven.
Eleven is when they start, but lunch will be about, we will be downstairs.
Um, thank you. Mark, anything? I don't have anything. Um, Steph, Wayne, do you have anything?
Yeah, I, uh, I like it's a high-end replaced. Got a couple bids to have a contract and fix them.
How many were you talking?
Uh, just two, it's all that we have in my work, kind of the budget for last year. They're seventy-one hundred dollars a piece to get change.
I don't know, they're fifteen hundred.
Yeah.
Like legit, maybe six years ago, they were fifteen hundred dollars a piece.
Items in Skydive, price of grass, it's very expensive. Um, I changed, well, public works has changed out a couple this year. It's not cheaper that for us to do it, we don't have time to do it. I think it saves two hundred, three hundred bucks if public works goes and does it. We're having a contract here, so. Uh, seventy-one hundred bucks. We have it in budget. We need to start getting replaced, we got a lot of light.
How are the doors on any of those parks?
We're doing, we're doing good.
Uh, working?
Yep.
How, how do they work?
So is it timed? How, how would you unset up?
Yeah, so I, as of right now, I have opening at six AM and they close at eight. And it's just an automatic lock. Um, if, if somebody's in there, there's a motion sensor, they walk up to the sensor, it opens, unlocks. They get out and it closes, it locks up again.
How, what do we do if someone has the boundaries passed that timeframe, what, what, what protocol do we do?
I can set that, events, I can, I can keep them open, won't we?
Great.
Is there, is there any provision to opening that door if the motion sensor doesn't work?
If you're stuck inside?
Yeah.
No. And so, but the motion sensors are tied to that block, so if the motion sensor fails, it'll just be unlocked.
Okay.
That makes sense.
It's.
So it's a fail-all, I don't know.
It's, yeah, it's, it's a fail-all, so if someone's failing on the system, it'll be unlocked.
Just, and maybe it's, well, because of where I work, I have, like, they have, you know, two doors.
Absolutely, I, I haven't seen it in two years.
And I get locked in there, and I have to walk back the other way and then come back to get out at times. But they do have a button right next to the door, I can push it and then on, on certain doors. I, I was wondering if that may be something to consider, whatever.
Well, if, if, if motion sensor fails, then it's just unlocked, right, so.
I, I don't mean to overcomplicate.
No, you're, you're good.
We have made a lot of progress and I don't mean to like.
I, I considered that too, but like.
Okay.
I don't think it'll be an issue, I mean, chances, somebody gets that.
Pretty, pretty remote, I agree.
So are we still working towards getting cameras there as well?
Yes.
Great.
Outside the.
Outside.
Yeah, I, right.
Absolutely.
Right.
How, um, how are the other parks going? How, um, how are the other parks going?
Did, yeah, I'm like, correct, it's, I'm the other group, fixed, various leaks this year, but everything's working as well.
Excellent. Is there anything we can do to support you in your team?
Oh, we're good.
Um, uh, Ted, with this, with the amount of water that we have and the rain that's coming down really quickly, we had flooding issues throughout the city, we're storm permitting back, that's.
No, no, we, I, I know I came in this week, you know, I think though, few rates that were flooded, but I haven't heard them flooded in the year. Everything's working good.
Excellent, thank you, we appreciate all of you. Jeff?
Just very quickly, a follow-up on Councilmember Moss's comments about e, e-bikes, electric motorcycles, scooters, golf carts. Just this week, I saw something that Farmington City put together that was very well put together, that very distinctly identifies what each one of those things are and, um, what they allow in their city, in their city parks, on the trails, on the streets. Um, it's very well put together, and I'd like to bring that, uh, to the next meeting just for you to review and look at. And so they adopted this as their city policy, and this is how they're going to enforce it. We're having a huge problem all over this county, and I think every city in this county is going to have to do something like that.
All over the state, there's, yeah, and.
Yeah, it's everywhere.
Down in St. George on golf, you know, with collision with the golf carts.
Could I get that from Mayor Anderson and put that before planning commission, just so you're sure?
Sure. And, and maybe that's the appropriate place to start with the planning commission.
I'll get it from Farmington and.
There's a plan, you can insert lane.
Have it for.
I mean, Ted, he deals with lanes, he's.
We'll do it.
Well, I don't know, I mean, maybe it's better, I, I think this is a city council thing, I don't start with planning commission.
Okay.
I, I'm, I'm happy to get it in front of you, though.
I will.
Just for a review, I will try, I'll try to, but, thank you.
I have a comment on that, so, kind of the same thing, we got, we got some signs made that say no motorized vehicles or anything about a class three e-bike, have even put them over the parks and a bit of cruise, is that kind of what you're saying?
Yes, but it, it goes into detail about exactly what class three bike is and what motor, electric motorcycle. It, it, it's very well, it's very well done.
I, I think that would be great, and it's kind of something we want to add to our rich order eventually, too.
Yeah.
Add that and.
This, this is a real problem, uh, it should get bigger.
I don't see that being a lane thing, I think we ought to just get it here to City Council, but I don't.
I'll, I'll bring it, I'll put it, thank you, I appreciate you letting us know about that. Um, going back to Flo.
Okay, I just remembered, I have had, can't, can't, it's the city reach out for, uh, for it. And so they want to know how many entries we're going to have, so I assumed it was same as last year. We need an unsung hero, so we can think about to do that, like me.
So what if we just do one entry? And we just have the City Council and U C Council as one entry?
Okay.
Does that make sense?
Yeah.
And we can unsung hero in that same entry, so we just have one.
Okay, and then, does it, does it, does it, Ken wants to be in the press again?
I'll talk to him. I know, I know he's been doing some other, um, uh, notification, notifications, but I will talk to him and see if he wants to do it again.
Could you let, could you give back to, or have Darren get back to Flo?
Yep, absolutely.
So, can you go twice and say something like that? So just one, one Fruit Heights City entry?
Yes. Is that okay?
I'm eight, so it's okay with that.
Yes. Excellent, thank you. Um, that's it, I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
Oh, it's a good adjourn.
Second.
So a motion from Elaine, second from Gary, all favor return, say aye.
Aye.
Seven thirty five, thank you.